I think the magic hour is upon us, so let me declare this meeting the State and City Council Open. It is March 19th. We have survived the Ides of March once again. And I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all. I really like a meeting close to the 15th of March when I can expound upon a brave Roman who was killed by his friends almost 2,100 years ago. And I won't do it tonight because it's passed and he's still dead, so we won't do that. Ah, let's see. Roll call, Counselor Priscilla. Thidwell is late this evening, but she is, like Christmas, still coming or on her way. So we've got people wandering around the audience here, which we need some of that. Okay, um, staff is all here. Lots of presentations this evening. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, bias, just plain mad? No? Okay.
District Attorney, some citizens have had some concerns.
Hey, whoa. Get that down the line.
Mr. Mayor, some citizens had some concerns that I really couldn't pass judgment on, so I gave them to our city administrator about issues that are closed, hearings that are closed. I don't know. Does that need to be disclosed? No, thank you.
Oh, okay, whatever. Let's go to presentations, comments from the public. I'll just take them in the order I got them. Steve, you've got the long presentation. Can we hold on you for, until I get through with these? Real quick?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Loftus, James.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I wish Priscilla was here so that I could compliment her. Excuse me. James Loftus, former city council member, owner of the Gardner House Cafe, 633 North Third Avenue, State and Oregon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
As a taxpayer and as a rate payer for Pacific Corps, I want to just give you some general observations over how you've handled the last few meetings because I've watched them on video. You were completely out of order. Being out of order can nullify any decisions you made. I'm not sure the attorney actually told you to declare an ex parte contact or possible conflict of interest because you're a business partner with them. If you receive power from them, then you have a contractual business relationship with them. I'm just pointing this out. I entered into the record, Wally Lean's Chapter Four Real Estate Course on Real Estate Law. Could you open that up, please, just to page 411? It should be the second page there. And you'll find that Wally actually instructs any student that a lean on a property, that is, it's called a right of prior appropriation, okay? And when you attempt to take something like that from somebody, and I have to compliment Ms. Counselor Cronquist because by adopting the ordinance that you did adopt, Pacific Corps does not have a right of inverse condemnation claim against you had you done that fine. So, why am I here? I'm pissed. I'm pissed that I'm going to be financing lawsuits on the city of State and side and on the Pacific Corps side. And I believe that when a citizen, whether it's a corporate citizen or an individual, attempts to provide you with public information, which I've just provided you, that it's incumbent upon you as an elected official to review the information, get as much information as you can. And when a counselor has a question and feels uncomfortable, Mr. Mayor, you should not be able to challenge her like that, okay? She should be able to express being uncomfortable. She should be able to express that she's not getting all of the information. You guys are being treated like mushrooms. What are mushrooms fed? And where are they kept? In the dark. Now, what this really leads me to, and I'm going to sum it up, is reputation management. We either have a policy of working with business partners or we have a policy of bending them over and taking whatever we can get from them, regardless of what other people think. A classic example is right by the liquor store. We now have a nice little kiosk that says, "We're not business friendly." I think some of the decisions that you folks are making shows that they need to be changed. And that comes from our leadership. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, James. Oh, let's see. Who else? John and Terry Mesa.
Dr. Stevens.
Well, that was...
Please support my presentation.
Oh, oh, okay, that's, all right. Justin. Steve, go ahead. You're up.
My name is Steve Poizan, and I live at 1750 East Pine in Stateon. I am here as president, or vice president, of Friends of Old Town Stateon. In January, I brought you a pair of ordinances we suggest you adopt to support our work in downtown revitalization. There were two proposed ordinances that existed under Section 17 of the code, which had to do with color palette and awning standards, and you passed those ordinances unanimously. Today, I bring proposals that fall under Section 15 of the code and thus do not go to the Planning Commission, rather they come directly to you. I have met several times with Keith Campbell and Dan Fleischman to develop these ordinances and met with the Chamber of Commerce to get their support. We held a business roundtable, having personally invited each merchant on first, second, and third, and posted proposals online for comment and got none. Now, I'm here to ask that you pass these ordinances. These fall within the scope of maintenance of public space, and they include removal of animal waste, keeping properties clear of debris, maintaining plants and planting and planters, prohibiting smoking or vaping in the front of buildings, and maintenance of awnings. And all this has to do with the downtown core. We've also included enforcement standards for these ordinances, providing for a clear notice to the property owner of any violations and giving them 60 days to comply before a citation would be issued. We believe these provisions are particularly important if these ordinance are to be effectively enforced. We ask that you pass these ordinances as presented to you today. In the future, we'll present ordinances dealing with vacant building standards, which will also be part of our downtown revitalization effort. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have and look forward to continuing to our revitalization in our focus area. Thank you. Any questions?
What's that? Get up close to that thing, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, Steve, I believe we can't vote on these today?
Oh, no.
What I was told was that you were to, you could instruct the staff to put these in form of ordinances and bring them back for your vote.
That sounds, that sounds kind of like the way it works. Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other questions for Steve? And the Friends of Old Downtown Stateon. Dan, Mr. Fleischman, does, with these, maybe it's already in the code. We've talked about it before, what I like to call the Silverton ordinances of if you've got a piece of business property in the downtown, it's either maintained or rented, leased, or sold. That we don't have these derelict offices and buildings sitting around. Is that, is that already in, in the code? Or is that something that FOTS maybe was going to incorporate in their requests?
That is not yet in the code, and that is the type of policy that I believe that Steve was saying they would be back with to discuss the maintenance of vacant building space.
Yeah, okay, all right, good. Thank you. So, council, what should we do with this? Entertain a motion to direct staff to put these in ordinance form and bring them back?
Really, even though I'm a non-smoker, I am somewhat, the anti-smoking vaping ordinance might cause some concern. I know that Ashland did it and Hillsborough did it and ended up in court, and the state of Oregon didn't come forward. I don't care. I don't smoke. I had a girlfriend in college who gave me a Carl DeLightmentfall once, but I think that that would open the city to potential liability with rumors and Mick and Moms and potentially others that we may not want to explore. The rest of the ordinances are pretty self-explanatory.
So, I would ask, yes, Steve, another comment?
I would just point out that these ordinances only suggest prohibiting smoking on the front facade side of the building. This does not limit them from smoking on the back of the building.
But it's written on any city property, and the alleyways in the back of both of those buildings are city alleyways.
I missed the first part. What's written?
The way your ordinance is written, it says something about city-owned streets and properties. The alleyway in back of Rumors and the alleyway in back of Mick and Moms are both city-owned alleyways.
I'm quoting from my form, which you should have a copy of. "Smoking or vaping is prohibitive outside the front street facade of any building in the downtown core." Smoking is defined as inhaling, exhaling, breathing, or carrying any lighted cigar, cigarette, or other tobacco in any manner or form. So it clearly is just doing the front facade. Our concern is that I've heard many complaints from citizens having to walk through areas, particularly in front of the bars.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm trying to prevent lawsuits.
I understand, and so that's what we're trying to do. The other question I have along those lines is, it is my understanding that it is state of Oregon law that it's, you're prohibited from smoking within 20 feet of any doorway, and I believe that's not being enforced in places like Mick and Moms where people smoke in front of the building and there are other buildings within 20 feet of that. So I don't know if putting another ordinance in here is the answer or if it's simply enforcing what's already part of state of Oregon code. I don't know the legality of that.
What would you folks like to do with this?
Suggest, Mr. Mayor, I suggest I move, we submit it to staff and thank them for their thoughtful proposal and let staff take a look at it and advise the council as to what to do.
We've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, a motion and a second to take these proposed ordinances and give them to city staff for review and to bring back to the council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign? Okay, four to zero. That one passes. All right. In the middle of our, our comments, we've got motions and, oh, let's see, somebody else. Anthony Behrens.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Behrens. I live in 1995 Woodland Hills Way, Salem, Oregon. Feel free to come by, just bring some food. I am running for mayor in County Circuit Court Judge, and I've been going to every city council meeting throughout the county. Just introducing myself, telling people a little bit about my campaign and passing out a little bit of information. I am not taking any money from anyone. I'm the only candidate not doing that. I'm also the only candidate with any kind of law enforcement background. I was a prosecutor, special prosecutor, special assistant attorney general. I have seven years of state-level judicial experience, which is five times more than the next guy. I've been in private practice and I have about 20 years as a public servant. And I have some significant ties to this community. I spent a good deal of my time in the East County. I was born in Salem, but spent a good deal of my time in the East County. I worked for North Standee and Plywood Mill to put myself through college and law school. And my wife works for Stateon High School. That's Emily Behrens. She, a lot of people like her. A lot more people like her than they like me. Same, you could say about my son. His name is Henry Behrens. He also goes to, he goes to Stateon High School. So, yeah, that's really all I wanted to say. I'll hand out a little bit of information, see if you guys have any questions for me. I'm happy to answer them. This is usually what I hear after I ask if there are any questions. So I appreciate your time, and I'll pass out the information. Thank you.
Well, if, Mr. Behrens, if, Circuit Court Judge?
Yes.
Okay. If, if there had been a long exposition of your stand on criminality, on the opioid epidemic, reinstating the death penalty, some maybe hot topics, exploring outer space, you know, whatever, you might get some more questions. Background is good, though.
Certainly. There are, when you're running for judge, there, at least at the state level, there are some significant limitations on what you can say. Essentially, you cannot talk about issues that may come before you. So I try not to talk about issues at all. Basically, if I'm asked a question regarding an issue, then I evaluate it to determine whether or not I can answer the question legally and ethically.
If you had been, if you were a transplant from Churchill, Manitoba, and basically you could talk about polar bears, but, you know, that would be kind of interesting. But, yeah, it is, background's good. It's okay.
Apparently, I was boring, and I apologize for that, it sounds like.
Nothing wrong with being a local. It's, it's a good thing.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
What's next? Who else? Is there anybody else right now?
People speak in support.
People speaking in support? I should have what? Get that thing close.
I believe there's somebody who submitted a green sheet. They want to speak in support.
Well, there's Mr. Behrens, other than John and Terry Mesa. I think we've heard from everyone else. Maybe not. Maybe not. Steve, right? Terry, do you want to get up there and have Annis? Beat us up a little bit for what we don't do?
Hi, my name's Terry Mesa. It's my husband, John Mesa. We own Moxie Berry at 429 North Third Avenue and Marketplace at the Grove at 351 North Third Avenue and Third Avenue Boutique at 349 North Third Avenue. We're here to talk in support of the FOTS ordinances, particularly the non-smoking one. I know currently, as a business owner, when I walk up and down Third Street, the Oregon State Clean Air Act is broken every day. The law is broken, and it's not being enforced. There are people who are smoking in front of the businesses, and it makes it very difficult to walk up and down the street. I believe that it is a very hot topic, and that can cause a lot of concern, like you said, for lawsuits. But that doesn't give us the right to neglect the responsibility and the rights to the other citizens in Stateon. I know that about 15% of the U.S. population currently are smokers. Secondhand smoke dramatically affects nonsmokers, particularly those with asthma and heart disease. Those with asthma make up 8% of the population, and heart disease of one form or another, 3% to 4% of the population, which is significantly greater than the number of those who actually smoke. So when you guys are formulating the ordinances, I'd like for you to take that into consideration, please. Do you have anything to add? And I have some stats for you, if you would like to read them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there any, any other, did anyone else want to say anything while we're on comments from the public? There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. But otherwise, let's go to a consent agenda, which is the minutes from the February 20th.
Mr. Mayor, I approve. I move we approve.
And OLCC license renewals.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve as written.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Motion and a second. Under discussion. Chief, any concerns about OLCC license renewals?
No.
Okay. How many, how many licenses exist in our community?
The list that you have there in the packet is...
Do you know how many there are?
Off the top of my head, not without counting them up.
I think it's almost 30, which is a little bit of a surprise. Maybe not. Okay.
I don't think so. Not when you consider what they are because that includes all of the retail places like the Circle K and the grocery store and places like that as well. So it also includes the restaurants that sell a glass of wine with their dinner and not just the bars.
I like that expression, "places like that." I like that. Thank you. Okay, motion and, and we're good. A vote on the, geez, the consent agenda, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign? Hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed. And we are going to, I've got, I need your indulgence on appointment of David Paddy to the Budget Committee. David's here tonight and is, is present, and I would, I would ask that you help us with okaying his appointment.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
A motion and a second to approve the appointment of David Paddy to the Budget Committee. Any discussion? Okay. Thank you for being here, David. And I'll ask for a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign? Hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed. And David, I think city staff will alert you when we get into budget hearings. I understand, early May, early May. Okay, so a little bit of time. Now, we have a couple of public hearings, so I get to read some stuff, and then we'll go to that. So, let's see. Which one are we, ordinance number 1016? Is that it? There's two of them here. Hang on a minute.
That's right, 1016.
Yeah. It should be this one. Concerning Legislative Amendments to Land Use Development Code, Single Family Dwellings. Okay, good evening. My name is Hank Porter. I'm mayor of Stateon, and I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 1-01/18 concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code regarding single-family dwellings that are non-conforming uses. The hearing is now open. The back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments, the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience, are there any objections to the notice for this hearing? I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter? I hear none. If there, I hear none. If there are any declarations of conflict of interest or bias of any, by any members of this body? And I hear none.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have detached dwellings behind my house, but intend to do nothing with them.
Okay, thank you. We are now ready for the staff report, and it goes like this. Mr. Fleischman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the issue before you is a public hearing on legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code that regarding the treatment of single-family detached dwellings. Single-family detached dwellings are a single-family dwelling that are not, there, it's only a building by itself with one dwelling unit that sits on the lot by itself, no other dwellings attached to it. Single-family detached dwellings that are non-conforming uses. And a non-conforming use is a use that is lawfully existing but does not conform to the list of permitted uses in the zone in which they are located. In general, non-conforming uses are uses that were in existence prior to the ordinance being, the code being enacted. The code allows them to continue but restricts their expansion or enlargement and specifies that should they be discontinued, they may not be resumed. The idea being, we have zoned an area for certain uses. The non-conforming uses that predate the zoning can continue, but when they live out their useful economic life, they should disappear and be replaced with the uses that we say we want in that zone. Single-family detached dwellings are not permitted in the commercial retail, the commercial general, the light industrial, or the downtown mixed-use zones. I've been using the city's geographic information system, or GIS. I've been able to estimate there are probably between 90 and 100 single-family dwellings that are non-conforming uses. Under the terms of the code today, a non-conforming use may not be extended into a different or greater area of the law in which it's located. So therefore, someone that has a single-family detached dwelling that's a non-conforming use may not put on a bedroom addition or a bath, any addition to the house, even though perhaps a common sense reading would be that that's not expanding the use. It's still a single-family home. It's just now a three-bedroom, three-bath house instead of a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. So the code's pretty clear that a detached dwelling may not be expanded or enlarged. So the proposed amendment specifies that in addition to a single-family detached dwelling is not considered expanding the use and would allow a detached dwelling to be, have an addition put on provided it meets the setbacks of the zone in which it's located. The Planning Commission initiated this amendment when I brought the idea to them. The issue came up back in December or maybe early January when really, within the course of like three weeks, I had two phone calls from people saying, "Gee, I want to put an addition on my house." And I had to say, "I'm sorry, you can't." And then said, "Well, let's change the code." So here we are. The Planning Commission held their public hearing at their February meeting and recommended to you that you enact the amendments. You've got the ordinance in front of you, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, Dan, it sounds like what we really need to do is have a zone change.
That's exactly what the Planning Commission said also and directed me to come back with some recommendations. There are, there are a couple of neighborhoods that I believe are improperly zoned. That it just, they've been zoned for commercial uses since the mid-'70s. It's hard enough to keep a business open on First Ave. Nobody in their right mind's going to open one on Third Ave north of the elementary school. But it's zoned commercial general and has been, as far as I can tell, for the past 40-whatever years. So it will take a while for that to get to you, but probably... So, it will take a while for that to get to you, but probably a June or July meeting will be back to you with some zone map amendments to address this issue and reduce the number of non-conforming, uh, single-family dwellings.
Is it better to do that at one fell swoop? I mean, I live in commercial, light, industrial, mixed-use, god knows what.
You live in, your home is in the light industrial zone.
Yeah. But we talked about going through and re-looking at, because it's been a number of years since we looked at the zoning. Would this be more appropriate to go and incorporate into the overall review of the city zoning rather than just a one-off ordinance? It's been more than like ten years, hasn't it?
It's been, it's been five since we did the comprehensive plan update and adopted a new zoning map. There are perhaps some other areas that would make sense to look at, but to address the issue of non-conforming uses, I believe the Planning Commission will see, it'll be on their agenda for next week, and we'll see. I've made recommendations for three areas in the city to change the zoning map, and we'll see if they want to do, want to do all three, or maybe they will look at the map and pick a couple of others as well.
But Pat...
But that's not a, I think both things need to happen, because we may not change the zoning map to hit every existing single-family home and to tell somebody, no, you can't put on a, an addition to your house.
Passing this tonight corrects the desire or their ability to do the expansion on their home in that area, yes.
Correct, you're right. And enacting this tonight will allow homeowners to expand their home regardless of the zone they're in, and in addition, we should look at the map and pick some areas to change.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Proponents' testimony, and Justin, would you like to speak at this time or down the road a little bit? Okay, Mr. Barrett.
Justin...
Give us your address, please.
Justin Barrett, 1593 North Third Avenue. I'm one of the homeowners that's caught in the mix with the zoning issue. I understand that this is, this is a quick fix for what we've got going, and I appreciate that you're looking at the bigger picture to get everything rezoned back to the way it should be. But I just feel that it's, it's kind of a necessity. When you buy a starter home on a big lot, you should be able to expand your house to grow your family with it and stay where you're at. I'm happy with the roots I've set down here and would like to stay. And with this change, that will be a possibility. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
So, Justin, can you tell me what you want to do to your house?
I'd like to add a bedroom and a bathroom. We're two-bedroom, one-bath.
Okay. Other questions? All right, Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
And are there any, other proponents' testimony on this? How about opponents? Any governmental agencies? Any general testimony? Questions from the public? Questions from the council? Dan, a staff summary, if you would, please.
I've got nothing more to add. You've got draft ordinance in front of you for your consideration.
I move we approve.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Hold on a minute.
Hold on.
Whoa.
Oh, nearly.
All right, close the hearing. Counsel deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1016.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the first reading, first consideration of ordinance 1016, amending land use code regarding detached, single-family dwellings that are non-conforming uses. Are there any discussion? Okay, Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Cronquist?
Aye.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Glidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, good, thank you. And there's always a little bit at the bottom of these. The council's decision may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals within twenty-one days in accordance with the Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 197.830. Okay, that's, that's one. Second one is ordinance number 1017, amending the land use code regarding effective dates, expiration of approvals, preliminary subdivision and partition plans, and submission of construction plans and final plats. I need to read another one of these. What did I do with the first one? Two, two, two. Yeah, okay, here we go. Again, I'm Hank Porter, Mayor of Stateon, and I will presiding, be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 2-01-18 concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code regarding effective dates and expiration of approvals, preliminary subdivision and partition submission requirements, and standard submission of construction plans and final plats. The hearing is now open. At the back corner is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments, the City Council's Rules of Procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing? I don't hear any. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter? I hear none. And are there any declarations of conflict of interest or bias by any members of this body?
In the future, Mr. Mayor, we may have some redevelopment efforts downtown, but none, gonna be...
Okay, in the future, all right. If there aren't any, there aren't, we're now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you. So, what we've put before you here is a, is a package of various amendments to the code that our review of these issues, our, when I say our, I mean staff, staff's review of these issues started with the issue that our current code requires that once an applicant receives subdivision approval from the Planning Commission, they must submit engineering drawings, construction plans, to the city within one year of the Planning Commission's approval. We have a case in the city today that, that they met that deadline, but the plans that were submitted were incomplete. And they were notified of that, and I think it was six or seven months later, they submitted an additional set of plans that were still incomplete. And four or five months after that, they submitted yet a third set of plans that were And that was about seven years ago. And the city's land use attorney's advice is that they met the one-year deadline for submitting plans, because that's all our code says. And even though seven years has passed, the Planning Commission's approval is still alive. Even though we have changed our code, the proposal that the Planning Commission approved could not be approved today, but that approval is, is still valid. So, looking to rectify that, staff started to look at the issues around what needs to be submitted, how do we determine they're complete, what do we do when we tell somebody that an application's not complete and time goes on and we never get complete plans, et cetera. And as we were looking at that issue, that raised other issues that we saw in the code, and we're here today with this package of amendments. So, what these amendments do is specify that decisions on quasi-judicial applications do not become final until the expiration of the appeal period. We dealt with that issue before the council a few months ago. They shorten the amount of time available for the city to reach a final decision on a very limited type of residential development from a hundred and twenty days, which has been the standard in Oregon for thirty to thirty-five years, to one hundred days. This shorter review period was mandated by a law enacted by the Legislative Assembly last year. So, we, we have to act in that case anyway, so let's put it into the code. And that limited type of development is for a multifamily building of five or more units, of which, of with which at least fifty percent will qualify as, quote, "affordable housing," which is defined in the statute. So, I think the chances of us seeing that type of development are fairly slim, and regardless, in the twelve years that I've been here, I can think of only one or two land use cases that have taken a hundred and twenty days anyway. So, I don't see it as a big issue. Thirdly, the amendments specify what actions must be taken in order to keep an application approval from expiring. The code currently states the applicant must, quote, "exercise the rights granted," unquote, within one year. The amendments clarify what exercising the rights means, and it differs depending on the type of approval it is, whether it's a subdivision or a site plan review or a conditional use. Next, the amendments set a timeframe for the city to approve a request for an extension of an approval, add some criteria for judging such a request, and specifies that an extension may be for no more than one year. Currently, the code just says the applicant shall, shall file a request before their approval expires, and it says only one extension may be granted, but it doesn't say that the extension can't be for twenty years. So, the suggestion is that we, we grant a one-time, one-year extension. Next, the amendments establish provisions that allow the city to declare that an approval has lapsed. Next, currently in the code, when someone submits a preliminary plan to the city, to the Planning Commission for review, there's a list of submission items that apply to partitionings and subdivisions, and then the code lists additional submission items that only need to be submitted for subdivisions. A partitioning is dividing a parcel into two or three lots, and a subdivision is four or more lots. There are three items that we are suggesting that are currently only required for subdivisions that we are suggesting also be required for partitions. Those three items are a plan showing soils information and any cuts or fills of more than twenty-four inches, the location of any wetlands on the property is shown in the city's local wetlands inventory, and a statement indicating the proposed timing of installation of any proposed improvements. Also, added to the submission requirements for preliminary plans is a requirement that if the applicant is going to be requesting a design modification from the city's adopted Public Works Design Standards, that they have to identify that upfront when they're before the Planning Commission. We don't get caught by that by surprise when they submit the construction drawings. And finally, another new item for submission requirement is the submission of a future development plan is required when the application is not for the development of the entire parcel, or when there is adjacent property that could be served by the streets and utilities. We want to make sure that the streets and utilities that are laid out for the proposed subdivision will be able to serve the remainder of the property and/or the adjacent land. Next, there's a number of references in the code to the Public Works Standards. They, they have not been updated to reflect the current title of the Public Works Standards. There is a suggestion in these amendments, not a suggestion, if adopted, it would be a requirement that any larger subdivisions provide at least two street connections for, for public safety, for fire apparatus to get in and out, which the state fire code allows and the proposed amendment, or requires, I should say, not allows, the proposed amendment references the state fire code. Require that, require that preliminary plans for subdivision allow the extension of streets and utilities into neighboring properties or the remainder of the parcel, as I just talked about in the submission requirement. Specifies that when incomplete construction plans for subdivisions or partitions are submitted, additional information must be submitted within a hundred and eighty-one days of the original submission, or the city will declare the applicant, application withdrawn. Clarifies that failure to submit construction drawings within one year of the Planning Commission approval or final subdivision plat within two years of approval results in expiration of the approval. Removes lots of details that are currently in the code for what needs to be submitted for those construction plans and just refers to the Public Works Design Standards, where all of those details appear in far more detail as to how they need to be presented. And finally, modifies the submission requirements for final plats. The code currently contains a long list of information that needs to be included on the final plat, and we are suggesting that we, we get rid of that long list and just say that final plats need to meet the standards of the Marion County Surveyors Office for subdivision plats, because all of that's there in their standards, so it doesn't need to be repeated in our code. So, that's a brief summary. I didn't go into all of the detail of what's in here. It is something like nineteen pages worth of amendments, so I, I will answer any questions you have either now or after you get the testimony.
Okay, thanks, Dan. And are questions from the council? Dan, would you give me, us an example of an exception to Public Works Standards? I'm thinking the shallowness of a, size of a pipe, the shallowness of a ditch, are those?
Yeah, those are the types of things that it may be that, that a particular catch basin design won't work here, or, or, yeah, a water pipe or a sewer pipe needs to be less deep than what the standards require.
If I may. Dan was hitting on that. Our standards call for pipes to be four feet deep. There are times in our, in our city, because we're so flat, that we just can't meet that. We might have to go two feet deep. We have ducted line or pipe, you can use it, but they need to request the use of that, and they need to show us that they tried to build it per our code, but if they can't, they come in with a design modification request, and they explain what they've done and what they're asking for, and then we'll decide whether or not we approve it or not.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was, okay. Anyway, someone else? Questions?
Mr. Fleishman, this is not retroactive to avoid. That one that's hanging out there forevermore will still hang out there forevermore, I
The amendments that before you this evening are not written to be retroactive. The city has about, three months ago, written a letter to the owner of that subdivision saying, you've got a hundred and twenty days to get complete plans submitted, or we're going to declare you expired. That timeframe will be up soon, and we shall see what happens. That, that letter went out after consultations with the city's legal counsel.
That's fine, that just makes this a lot cleaner to adopt.
Yes.
Other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, please.
So, the Planning Commission came up with all of these amendments to this...
These are amendments that were developed by staff, by myself, in consultation with the Public Works Director, the City Engineer, and the City Attorney. They were presented to the Planning Commission, who reviewed them, set a public hearing, held a public hearing, and has recommended to you that they... a public hearing, and has recommended to you that they be adopted.
Okay. Refresh my memory, is there a developer of any kind on the Planning Commission? I guess my question is if any local developers have looked at these changes, or you've gotten any feedback as to how this might impact somebody doing a development? I mean, do you see it as impacting them or not really impacting them, that it's really just kind of cleaning up language and stuff, I guess?
I will speak on behalf of the Public Works side of it and the design standards. Our design standards are very similar to other municipalities in the, from here to the Portland metropolitan area. They're no different, they're no more stringent. Our stormwater standards are probably more stringent than some of the smaller, outlying communities. However, we have a memo of understanding with the San Diego Water Control District that dictates that. Our hands are tied as far as that goes. But the other standards, the Public Works Department reviews during their plan review for subdivisions, are no more stringent than any other city, which a developer that comes here has already been doing development there, so these aren't, there's no surprises here.
To answer your question, Councilor Gladwell, I do not believe any of the Planning Commission members are in the development industry. There's one who is a real estate broker. That's probably the closest. But, you know, again, they've been on the city's website, there was notice of the Planning Commission's hearing, there was notice of this hearing.
Right, I understand the notices.
The standards, there's very little change in the standards for development. What's, the real changes that are in here, the impact will be, a developer will need to implement their approval in a more timely manner than our code currently requires.
And Lance actually kind of addressed what my question really was, is are we, you know, doing something that's going to put us in a position at some point to be in conflict with someone? And if everything that's in here is pretty standard to what other people do, and it's kind of just a cleaning up of the timelines and stuff like that, that's pretty much what I wanted to do.
What I will say about the timelines, in my years of being a consultant, I have never seen a city or a county that would allow a subdivision that was approved seven or eight years ago come in and continue to go down the process. It just wouldn't happen, they would have expired years ago. That's what we're trying to clean up. We don't want to get caught with our hands tied where we can't, say, "You can't do that, because our new code says you can't, because they've already got conditions of approval." So, that's kind of what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Quigley.
Dan, do you recall what made the planning complete each time?
I don't, because I wasn't involved in the review. The first time, it was quite a long list of things that were missing, and the next time, the list wasn't quite as long, and I think a lot of it was the lack of supporting calculations and reports that would go along with the stormwater, things like that.
Okay, so the change where it says the code currently states the applicant must "exercise the right granted within one year" will cover that? Cover that, their inability to keep extending it by saying it's?
Right. And again, for a subdivision, what the code says today is, is you shall submit construction drawings within one year. And then if they're incomplete and you never come back, there's nothing in the code that says, "Sorry, you ran out of time." And so, you know, so again, here we are, seven years later, with a project that could go forward if they get their plans in by the beginning of the month.
Other questions from the council? Any proponents' testimony? Any opponents? Oh, proponent. Bill, which side are you on? Which side are you on?
Proponents.
Oh, proponents, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. My name is Bill Martinak, and I reside at 1-555-6 COON HOLLOW ROAD in Sublimity. So, I kind of have some questions and some comments that would be helpful if we kind of name names. I think I know the subdivision that you're talking about, so if it's the one that's been seven years, is like on the southeast corner of the city, or maybe not. It would just be helpful to name names.
Without naming names, it's close to downtown, situated between the two canals.
Do you go by the dog park to get there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that's, okay. Now, I'm thoroughly convinced I know what you're talking about. So, my first question had to do with the request for a waiver of design criteria. Did I hear you right when you said that you wanted, you would want that submitted at the time that a subdivision is submitted to the Planning Commission?
Correct. If the applicant proposes to not meet any design requirements, then a design modification request. I would say if that means that, once they get Planning Commission approval, and then discover that one is necessary, that doesn't preclude being able to request one. But if you know upfront that there are design standards that you're not going to meet, then let us know now.
Okay, but, so if you do find something out later on, because you're not going to have full-blown construction drawings done at the time you go to the Planning Commission, sometimes.
That is correct.
But you'll still allow them later on.
If you're coming in with your construction plans, and you've gone through, and you noticed, "Hey, I can't get this manhole here to work, Lance. I need a design modification request." We have a process that you go through. You tell me why you can't, and you explain it. There's an outline that you'll have to follow, and it'll come in, we'll review it, myself and the city engineer, and we'll accept it, or we'll, if you make your case. It happens everywhere, I'm sure you're aware of that, the design modifications. All right.
Yeah, as long as you can do them later on.
Yeah.
And then, I think I heard the clarification there, that this is all going forward and not pertaining to previous approvals?
Correct.
Except for?
Well, not except for.
One that is just too old.
The unnamed development has been put on notice, they have till April 1 or 4, or something like that, to do it or get off the pot.
Yeah, I don't think you can make these retroactive, is what you're asking.
Yeah, good idea. Good idea. So, under the, and I'm going to point out the exact numbers and letters, but under the provision requiring two points of access, so, under this, if this was adopted, then a subdivision like Wildlife Meadows would never take place.
A subdivision like Wildlife Meadows would have to get an easement from his neighbor for a secondary access, that's correct. That's state fire code.
Well, they were.
Some jurisdictions are twenty-five lots, we went to thirty lots.
Well, I think that a lot of people were wondering how and why they didn't have to do that and get.
Right, because we don't have a provision in our code today to prohibit it, and during the Planning Commission review of that subdivision, we didn't have a fire district come in and saying, "Hey, what about a second access?"
Yeah, okay. So, just, there's one other item in here, and this is on page three, item seven, where you talk about mid-block lots, or walks, you know, just connecting from a street, say, across to a school or out somewhere else. And currently, those are generally, there's a lot of them all over town that are about six feet wide. Why do, why are you proposing to go to a twenty-foot-wide easement in the future?
It's a design issue. We have a mid, talking about Wildlife Meadows, we have a mid-block walk there that is twenty feet wide. I mean, the walk isn't, but the tract for the walk is, and I would suggest, while the houses haven't been built right next to it yet, I would suggest compare that and the livability of the neighborhood with the six-foot-wide walk that leads off of Gardner into West Town, where the chain link, you know, you're walking down with the chain link fence right at your shoulders.
Yeah, well, I think that's addressed by widening that out to eight foot, and I know I go through some of those in the West Town, and the one between Regis and the street to the south, where the Arbividee is grown in, which could do that. It just seems like tripling it was maybe a little bit, maybe, anyway. That was just my comment on there, I just thought that that was quite a bit more than necessary.
That depends if you live there or not. If you live there and you have kids running their bicycles down that pathway, and your bedroom window is eight feet away, you might think differently.
Well, you just built a sidewalk all the way across the front of the school, and it's not twenty feet wide, so.
No, the sidewalk doesn't need to be twenty feet wide.
But, yeah, so what are you going to do with the?
It gets, like in Wildlife Meadows, it gets landscaped, and provides a?
It's a bumper.
So, there'll always be, that'll be all part of like a homeowners' association that takes care of that?
Or dedicated to the city.
Okay, okay. So, then, throughout, moving on like to page four, there's, the other discussion that I wanted to talk about had to do with the reimbursements for oversizing, which I think is an issue that you've maybe discussed here recently. And, so, I would really think that that's a pretty big issue for developers coming into a project. In some jurisdictions, that a developer can determine that even prior to purchasing land, by coming down and figuring out what's going to be required, and then what's going to be reimbursed for oversizing. So, here, I noticed that there's language that you're changing about that, and going away from, here you took out what it says that the city would pay additional costs of such larger lines, based on a current rate schedule that you already have adopted. And I'm, I've kind of dealt with that in the past, and I'm not really sure. You have some guidelines in your master plans, but, so changing that to just saying that the city and the developer will talk about that, and have an agreement that specifies what if any costs the city will reimburse the developer is. I'm sure you're going to have lengthy discussions about that.
This is something that you're really familiar with, it's called a developer agreement. We sit down and discuss those, those items, and we talk about, as part of that development agreement, because you won't get a site development permit until the development agreement is signed and recorded.
Exactly.
During that process, we determine what's going to need to be, what can be reimbursed, and how much those costs generally are. However, those costs are going to be based on construction prices, so you can't really come up with a number until the project's been constructed, unless you have a bid from a contractor, which shows what it would cost to do that.
Well, you just said that those costs can't be arrived until you've already, that it's been constructed.
You're a contractor, I know for a fact that you bid on jobs, the permits haven't been given yet. I used to do it all the time, I'd give you plans. "Bill, give me a price for these, what it's going to cost me here. These are the third set of plans." And I know Ameren Sons does that, all contractors do that. So, I could get a bid as a developer before I even have the permit, and that's something I can use to arrive with, at my, drive my developer agreement cost.
And the difference is generally, when we work for someone, and we sit down at a time, and we agree on what that delta is going to be, what the difference is going to be between what we constructed and what we would get reimbursed for, paid for in addition. And what I'm saying there is that, I think it would be very helpful to have a rule that you followed universally. In here, you listed under, on page four, under water supply, but you don't talk about it in the section about, that talks about streets, which in certain times, there are reimbursements that are due for street construction, and then?
Bill, if I can, if I may interrupt, all of the provisions regarding reimbursement for oversizing facilities and building what the code calls qualified public improvements are covered in Title 13 of our code, which was amended maybe about a year ago, maybe as much as a year and a half.
Last January.
Okay, so, and it's all spelled out there, it's just in a different title of the code, and the language that we're proposing to be deleted, which refers to the current rate schedule adopted by the city, if the city has a current rate schedule, none of the current staff is aware of it.
Okay.
It doesn't exist. Or if it exists, it was something done in the nineties.
Okay, so you're saying that somewhere in what you adopted a year ago, there's a complete discussion about reimbursements?
Correct.
And this, you're just bringing this section?
Into compliance.
That only talks about reimbursements for sewer and water to meet some other, what section is it again?
It's Title 13, which is the title about utilities, and it includes the chapter on system development charges, because that's really what we're talking about, is a credit or a reimbursement of system development charges.
Okay, well, it would be, it would be easier if you just said, if you just referred to that in here, like you've done in the thing for Marion County, and that's, my last thing is, that's awesome what you've done there, taking out all of that.
All that garbage.
Garbage, and simply referring to what we all have to follow from Marion County. Now, if you can put something in here to get Marion County to put a timeline out on how long they take to do things, that would be appropriate.
You got the new circuit court judge here.
You can take care of the commissioners? Okay, all right. Well, anyway, that's, that's all I had, and basically, yeah, what you're doing here, cleaning things up is, that's, that's great. Anything that you can do to make it easier to understand is appropriate. And I'll, I'll read that other section, because I don't remember seeing that before, where it talked about how you changed that. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other proponents or opponents' testimony? Any governmental agencies? Any general testimony on this? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the council? End of staff summary, Dan, please.
I don't have anything else to describe the amendments before you. You've got a draft ordinance, you can approve it as presented, or make modifications to it, or retain the code unchanged, if you wish.
Mr. Mayor, I move we?
Hold on.
Close up first.
Okay. Hearing's closed, council deliberation. Counselor Conquist.
Thank you, Dan, for cleaning things up, as you do well. I move we approve it as submitted by staff.
Okay. Any other council questions? Okay, and now on to decision.
Wait a second.
You offered a motion to approve it. So, this was ordinance number 1017, amending land use code regarding effective dates, expiration of approvals, preliminary subdivision and partition plans, and submission of construction plans and final plats. I have a motion and a second to approve that ordinance as submitted. Anything else? Does this have to go to two or three approvals?
If the vote tonight is unanimous, that's it.
Let's see what happens. Alyssa, hold the council, please.
Sure. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Uselman?
Yes.
Counselor Conquist?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. So, that's on. All right, good. Okay, the council decision may be appealed, or the land use board appeals within twenty-one days, in accordance with the Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 197.830. And we're done with that. There's no unfinished business tonight. New business, Resolution Number 973, a community garden relocation. Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is Resolution 973. Issue tonight is, shall the city relocate the community garden to land owned by Norpac Foods, located north Evergreen Street, south of the state? Foods located north Evergreen Street, south of the Salem Ditch? As most of you are aware, in November of 2016, a proposal to construct a dog park at Fourth and Florence was brought to the city council. The proposal called for the construction of the community dog park at the location of the former community garden located there at Fourth and Florence. The proposal also called for closing the community garden temporarily until another location could be found for it. That proposal was first brought before the Parks Board, the committee, and the Planning Commission for review and consideration. Both boards and the committee voted in favor of that, so it was brought before the city council. The city council voted for one to conditionally close the community garden and construct a dog park there in its place. That was done on two conditions. $25,000 would be raised by the community fundraising efforts, which would be donated to the city and applied to the dog park construction. That was done. And number two was the Parks Board would work to find another location for the community garden. In late 2016, Mayor Porter, you did speak with Randy Benz of Norpac about the potential of using some Norpac property for the community garden. Randy was interested. He thought Norpac would be interested with the partnership. In September of 2017, I approached Randy after learning of one Clarence Adams passing on Evergreen Street and asked if they'd be interested in letting us use that garden spot for the community garden. Norpac viewed that partnership and they liked that idea, and they proposed a renewable lease that could be renewed every three years for $1 a year. A temporary public use easement was crafted and executed in February 2018. I believe the easement is located with this packet. A land use application for the site plan review was filed with the City Estate and Planning Department in January. Site plan review was brought before the Planning Commission in February, and the...there was three proponents that testified in favor of the proposal with zero opponents. The Planning Commission voted five to zero for the proposal. The fiscal impact of moving the community garden to the spot on Evergreen is not very much to the city, because it's...the property is owned by Norpac. It would be $6,200 to the city, because that'll be...we'll be paying for a water meter, an irrigation system, and that includes the man-hours for city employees to construct the garden. The cost of the water is estimated to be about $500 bucks a year based off previous and history, and it'll be passed through to the renters of the garden plots. An annual audit of the water consumption of the garden will take place, and the garden plot costs or will set the prices for the garden plots the following year. So before you tonight, your options are approve Resolution 973 regarding the relocation of the community garden, approve Resolution 973 with modifications as directed by the city council, or take no action and instruct staff to find an alternative location for the community garden. And that is all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Lance. Questions and thoughts, counselors?
Lance, the old gardens rented for $15 a plot. There were roughly 30 plots, so that covered the $500 you're estimating?
The water usage varies, but the $25 was divvied up between the amount we actually rented the previous year. It was like $475. It came out to be about $25.
It was a wash, basically.
Yeah. That's not what I was looking at.
Okay. Other questions, thoughts? This was a promise.
Yep.
Yeah, a couple of years ago. If before the group that wanted to build a dog park before they sought anyone else's approval, that was an implied promise that the community garden wasn't just gonna go away, even though it had strange vegetables that grew legs and walked away at night, but we would relocate it. So I consider that an implied promise on...at least on my part. Other questions, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 973 regarding the relocation of the community garden.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 973, the community garden relocation. And Alyssa, one more time, if you will, please.
Sure. Counselor Esselman?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And thank you, Lance, for all your work on that. Okay, let's see. I think we're down to reports, I think.
No.
Let's see. No, we've got Resolution Number 974, Resolution Supporting Friends of Old Town State and its Application for Participating in Main Street Status. A staff report, Mr. Fleischman and Mr. Isaac KM, which is the easiest way for me to deal with that name. Is that all right?
It's power.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
It's two syllables either way. What do you say?
It's fine.
I'm gonna turn it over to Isaac to present this, if I may.
I am Isaac Courtmead at 784 North 30th Avenue here in Stateon. So the resolution you have before you is something that is part of the transforming downtown application that Friends of Old Town Stateon is working on. So we are part of the Oregon Main Street System. The Oregon Main Street System works with small towns across the state to help them set the structure for Main Street organizations, downtown development, and organizations like ours. And one of the things that they do is they put each community into a tier, and you start at the lowest tier, which I believe is called the associate tier, which essentially is people who are thinking about getting involved in it, thinking about improving their downtown. You then move up to exploring downtown, which is where we are right now as an organization, which is essentially people who have put together a committee, put together an organization, and are now starting to implement the Main Street System. We are applying to move up to the transforming downtown tier of the Main Street System, which is communities that are implementing the Main Street System, are working hard, but still need some amount of technical support from the Oregon Main Street directors, staff, all that kind of stuff, to help them move on to the final level, which is transforming down...I don't actually remember what it's called, whatever the top level is, which we're not there yet. But anyways, so the resolution you have before is...before you is part of that application. It asks for a resolution of support from the city council. It's essentially just a way for us to put in clarity and in writing that we have the support of the city council and the city in the actions that we're taking. There's nothing in there that says that you all will never disagree with us, that you won't, you know, oppose any actions we're taking, that you will be required to give us money when we ask of you. All it says is that you support what we're doing. If you look at a lot of city documents, including the downtown development plan, they set out as goals, stuff along the lines of improving downtown, making downtown better for business owners, making downtown a more beautiful, walkable, friendly place for locals and tourists, and that aligns pretty much exactly with the goals of Friends of Old Town Stateon. So, saying all that, just want to express my thanks for myself and the rest of Fats, who a lot of people are actually here today from Fats. You know, our thanks to you all and to the city too for your continued support and help in achieving our goals of improving downtown. So that's what I have for you. I would encourage you to approve this resolution.
Thank you, Isaac. Are there questions and thoughts from the council?
Declaration of contact. I happen to live in Fats as defined geographically. I happen to own property within the geographic division of Fats, but it has no impact on my decision.
Okay. Here. Ditto. Ditto. Oh. Ditto.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 974.
Okay.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 974, Supporting Friends of Old Town Stateon's Application for Participation in Main Street Status. Is...are there any other questions or comments? Let's just call...let me call for a vote then, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Hearing done. We declare the motion passed, five to zero, and we're down to staff commission reports. Finance Department. February monthly finance department report. Does anyone see anything there that they wanna comment on? And, okay, let's go to police chief's report. Chief?
Mayor and council, you have before you the statistical report for the month of February. Last month, when Sergeant Meek stepped in for me, he mentioned the difference in the police activity from investigative incidents, and I just wanted to just kinda clarify with that, that is an operational difference. The numbers, if you add the two together, they are still very similar to what they've been in the past, it's just an operational...the way that we're counting the numbers internally between two different computer-type systems that we're using. One of the numbers that I did wanna bring to your attention was the number of frauds that we've been having. Those seem to be increasing, and sadly, the majority of those are the elderly and people that are accepting those phone calls that many of you have received, where they're telling about somebody's loved one is in jail in another country or that wire us money over to wherever it happens to be to help their grandchild out. And people seem to be falling for those lately quite a bit, including Craigslist ads and things like that. So that's...seems to be a problem lately that we've been dealing with.
Chief, what do you do with those when you hear about them?
There's...sadly, there's not a lot we can do with those except for to take the report, and we do forward some of those on to the Department of Justice. But they're very, very difficult and very, very difficult for even the FBI to follow up on those as well, just because most of them are done from overseas. Many times, it's from a...they'll spoof the phone number, so they'll use somebody else's phone number to call you to make it look like it. In fact, I've even had them in my phone where it shows up as it's somebody in my contact list that looks like calling, and then you answer it, and then it turns out to be one of these fraud calls.
Hmm.
So they're very difficult. A lot of times, it's even from what they call a floating...floating criminal or a floating server, where it's somebody out on a ship making those phone calls, so it's not even from another country. It's virtually impossible to track when that happens. The biggest thing is we wanna get it out to the citizens to do not accept those types of phone calls and to remind them that their relatives will not be calling them, asking them to wire money from another country to get them out of jail or to pay their taxes.
Yeah.
And the other thing that we're doing is we are really heavily looking at people and their seatbelt issues, not wearing their seatbelts, and that's what the officers are looking for as far as traffic enforcement the next couple of months, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, chief. Questions or thoughts? Go ahead, please.
Have you been given out any vendor permits lately? Out at spring, the weather's getting better?
Like solicitor permits? Not recently.
There's a gentleman going around asking what the condition of the air quality is inside the house. And I said, "You don't wanna find out how hot it is in here," so...
So just give us a call when those come in, and our officers will follow up on those.
Gotcha. I'm gonna mention that at home. Tend to answer the door and not ask enough questions. Air quality. Okay, a public works director's report. Mr. Ludwig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have my monthly operating report for the month of February. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding it or anything else going on in Public Works.
Okay. I don't know, it may be premature, but when do we expect Hayden to start doing something? This summer?
Yes, absolutely. They'll probably be submitting plans by the first of April, is what I've been told. I'm working with them, because they're designing Kendall Way, and we've got the detention pond, so there's like three big projects going on down there that we're...I'm trying to coordinate with them, but they'll be submitting those plans by the first of April.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions for Lance? Mr. Fleischman, planning and development director.
You've got my monthly report for February. I'll answer any questions you have on it, but I do wanna really direct your attention to the page after that and let you and the community know that we were...that last week we received notification that our grant application for housing rehabilitation funds was awarded to us. That will be $400,000 of federal community development block grant money that will be available to residents of Stateon...
That's really good.
Woodburn, Mount Angel, there was another community, Almsville, I believe. Or no, Turner, that all went in together. These are funds that will be granted to income-qualified homeowners who live in manufactured dwelling units but do not own the land that their unit sits on. So primarily targeted to residents of the three mobile home parks. Once we get a contract from the state, we will work on getting the publicity out and getting those funds out into the community as fast as we can.
Dan, as my memory serves me, and I hope correctly, weren't we going to be the sort of the centerpiece of that whole effort?
Yeah, we are the lead applicant. The state's rules require that these applications come in from a regional consortium of cities or counties, so that's why there's the four or five of us together. We are the city with the most capacity in City Hall for managing the grant, so we, with your blessing, agreed to be the lead applicant and are glad that we're successful. I think there'll be substantial demand for these funds while they're available.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dan. Questions for Dan on that at all? Any of that? Thank you. Love them. Yeah, okay. Jana, library director's report.
So mayor and council, you have my report before you. I was gonna tell you that the week of March 5th through the 10th, the library did a one week of food for fines. So you bring a can of food in, we'll waive a dollar in overdue fines. We took in 342 pounds of food to the state and community food bank and waived $471.20 of overdue fines.
Good. Good, yeah. Questions for Jana, anything? Love that library. Okay.
So that's over now? I can't bring my stuff in now?
What's that?
Sorry.
The seller's trying to skate on some of her fines.
You could bring a couple of cans of food, and you're fined.
Yeah, bring some food. Get on the bandwagon. There we go. Business from the city manager or presentations from the public? Comments anymore? Mr. Morgan? That's what happens when you show more than twice in five years at these, you become a first-name basis person.
I'm Dan Morgan, and I reside at 2195 Cardinal Avenue here in Stateon, and I just have a couple of questions if I could. My first one would be directed at Lance. Have you scheduled another park meeting like the one we had here a couple of weeks ago? Has that been scheduled yet?
No, and you'll be well aware of it when we do schedule it. The consultant's going back and compiling data and doing some preliminary layouts based on that data, and then we will let people know at that time when we're gonna schedule that.
One of the things...this is directed at Lance again. One of the things that I probably should've brought up at that meeting that wasn't hung the diagrams and everything that we plotted our ideas around was, is the mobile home a definite going to stay there as a community center, or is that still up in the air?
That's beyond my control. I think you should address that perhaps to the city manager. I don't know. I am working with the consultant, and I am asking for them to give us input on what could go there. We do have a lot of parking that has to take place in there, because we...Kendall Way will not be parked on. So, you know, I don't know right now.
Could you address...
Right now, we're going through the process to see, you know, what the advice we receive from going through this, so I don't really have a comment right now on where it will be or won't be going forward. We're just gonna let the process play out.
Okay. Of course, I was here a month or so ago addressing the council on the fact that the teen center is wanting to go into that mobile home. They dropped by flyers at our home this evening, and I didn't really have time to diagnose it and read it real thoroughly, but I think they were having a meeting this Friday, getting the neighborhood's ideas and commitment on that teen center, and... And I jokingly asked them if I could testify at that meeting, and they said, well, no, but you can come and give your input and answer your questions. And of course, my main concern, and I could maybe direct this to the chief, because I also asked him, are you aware that there is a drug house closely connected to that? And they said, yes, we are aware of that, and we have been working with the police department on getting that resolved. Do you have any comment on that, as if they have been directing with you on what can be done about that?
As far as have they been working with us, they have been talking with us and talking about the teen center and talking about where, what the status is on that house over there. The officers, like I've mentioned before, are still continuing to work on that house. The traffic over there has continued, has definitely been reduced since the gentleman that lived there was incarcerated, and it's dropped down significantly. There is still some activity, but not near to the level that it was at the time.
Okay, that's good news. So I guess my other question could be directed to the council. At such time as this, either the park planning has to be approved by the council, once Lance has submitted all the plans and they are finalized, is then a city council decision on approving or disapproving those plans? Is that correct? Or is it total?
Yeah, that's part of the process, right.
Great. And so then, at that time, it'd also be a city council's recommendation or approval of renting or leasing the mobile home out for a teen center.
I don't have the schedule with me tonight, but I believe the consultant will be coming before the city council numerous times along the way to show what their ideas are, based off community and the committee's support and their recommendations, that they'll be coming before the city council, I believe, twice minimum. So the city council will have plenty of opportunities to provide input and things like that.
Well, I just thought it was strange tonight that we got this notice of this meeting, but yet you haven't decided on even keeping the mobile home or not.
Well, I'd be the wrong guy to talk to. I don't know anything about the, I just don't. I'm not, I'm not involved with that at all.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
I apologize for that, but that's just the way it is. I don't know anything about it.
I just thought they were maybe getting a little ahead of the game to presuming that they were going to have that and going on with their planning until they were for sure that they could have that. I'm just curious on what the process would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Let's see. Any other presentations or comments from the public? Anything else tonight? Business from the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to actually read a few things here. Three separate press releases. The first two were done by the Oregon Association of Water Utilities. So let me read this. The annual water operator of the year award's purpose is to acknowledge and honor an individual who regularly goes above the call of duty. They represent the Oregon Association of Water Utilities through their work ethic, integrity, and the servant attitude that they regularly demonstrate at their place of work. It is a privilege and an honor to recognize the recipient of this award. It is the OAWU's privilege to acknowledge Tom Etzel, professionalism, performance, attitude, and care of the City of Stateon's water system. He takes pride in his work, is extremely conscientious, does not take shortcuts, is willing to learn, and shares the things that he has learned with others. In addition to these, Tom is a hard worker and a delight to work with. This award was presented during the awards banquet at the OAW Annual Conference in Sun River, and it's truly a pleasure to offer this award to such a quality person. And Tom is a great public servant and even a better person, so I just wanted to publicly recognize Tom. We had put something out on social media to recognize him for that award. Second, at the same Sun River OAW conference, the city has received the second, for the second year in a row, the annual award for best surface water in Oregon. City of Stateon has excellent water, which was proven again this year by an unbiased panel of three judges who did a blind taste test of the drinking water from around Oregon, judging it on a clarity bouquet and taste. So congratulations to our public works department on the second straight year of winning best tasting surface water.
And finally, from the Government Finance Office Association, also known as GFOA, the Government Finance Office Association is pleased to announce the City of Stateon, Oregon, has received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentations. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communication device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the fourteen mandatory criteria with these categories to receive the award. And this is the second straight of the year we've received this, and I want to give my thanks and appreciation to the staff and to the governing body for the support and that recognition. With that, I will yield the floor.
Thank you, Keith. Good budget. That's good. I don't have anything this evening, business from the council? Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One thing. I feel like I'm in Groundhog Day today because I keep looking at the clock and I keep saying seven o'clock. Come on, it's a little joke. He can get that clock taken.
I still haven't adjusted the time, so.
Future agenda items for April of 2018, a housing study, food carts, the library roof. Is the roof leaking?
The roof is in the works. They're out for a bit, so.
That's the original roof on that addition, isn't it, on the new building?
We fixed it.
And that's part of the problem that was put on by, what, a couple of different groups?
I don't know the answer to that.
Or Saturday morning volunteers or something? Okay, anyway, anything else?
Yes, aye. I, because I was not in the, part of the process of hiring an attorney for the council, I feel kind of at a loss. I don't know who that person is or who to call if I need information. Are we going to have any kind of a meet and greet so we know who is supposed to be representing us?
Keith has that for us.
Yeah, I mean, the council selected LGLG as the local government law group. Ross Williams is the attorney that is the lead attorney on that. They are based out of Eugene. What the decision has been, which was Qualley Lean, who served as the land use attorney and has served as the interim city manager, was going to remain on for items that were under his purview, and then all new items would go to LGLG. So they're working together and transitioning. I'd be happy, if need be, to have them up. LGLG has expressed that, you know, they really will only want to come up if needed, or they can do it even via Skype if necessary. But if you'd like to try to schedule a meeting, we can. We'll be meeting with one of their team members, I think, coming up shortly, so. It is a law firm, so there is a group of lawyers with a lead attorney.
So we won't have one person that deals with us?
Ross is the one person. So that's the lead attorney, but they have a group of attorneys at work that handle different areas, so depending on the issue, it could be someone else in the law office.
He's the big guy in the firm, and he was the one that made the presentation up here. They came up and he did most of the presenting. Pretty impressive. Is there anything else this evening? Let's go home.